Board of Education meeting 1592 is now called to order. Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Motion by Julia.
Second.
Second by Megan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. And at this time, we will stand for our pledge of allegiance, but if we could have our students from Concord and the IDEA Center come forward to lead us in the pledge? We'll just come to the middle here. Tonight, we are recognizing Concord Elementary and the IDEA Center, followed by a presentation from students in the LEAP and PEGS programs. And first, we will turn it over to Principal of Concord Elementary, Brian Meckel. And he will present Concord's recognitions.
Good evening, everybody. I'm pretty loud, though. And now you've given me a mic, so we're in trouble. First, I'm going to call up my assistant principal, too. Liz Coitzers here. And we have scripts because everybody knows if I'm off-script, I might ramble on. And I think there's other business to cover tonight. So we're going to start off with our Teacher of the Year for the 2223 school year. Tammy Russell, come on up. And I think what I'm about to share is really pretty special because it's kind of a mashup of all the wonderful things that were actually shared about her from her peers, right? So I think that type of recognition is even better. So Mrs. Russell has been an educator for 24 years. She develops relationships with her students that are unmatched. All her students, both past and present, and their families adore Mrs. Russell because she treats her students with love, patience, and acceptance. In addition to the positive relationships, Mrs. Russell is a fabulous teacher. She provides her students with excellent instruction and goes above and beyond every day to make sure each student's needs are met. She knows how to individualize instructions so that her students are challenged and supported in each subject of their learning. Mrs. Russell is a strong advocate for her learners and seeks advice from other teachers and colleagues when she needs support. She is always learning and adapting to be better, or to better her students. Mrs. Russell's cooperative and can-do attitude is another great attribute. She's a team player and supports her teammates by sharing ideas, brainstorming, and strategizing. We -- exclamation point at the end of this sentence. We are so lucky to have Mrs. Russell at Concord Elementary School. So Tammy, we have a certificate here recognizing you as Teacher of the Year at Concord Elementary, and then a gift certificate for $30 to the student. There you go. So we are going to do a quick picture.
Well, it's my honor to recognize our Support Staff Person of the Year at Concord, and that would be Mrs. Amy Proctor. Amy had the role as a Building Assistant at Concord, and she has played an essential part at our school. She is always willing to jump in and help where she is needed. Many staff don't even realize how many ways she has pulled in any given day, but that is because she is selflessly and seamlessly moves from one task to the next. Mrs. Proctor is the first to step up if there is a need that arises during the day to fill in. She covers lunches, recesses, works in the teacher's hub, she subs when is needed, and she volunteers her time at school events. She exemplifies what it's like to be a team player and is instrumental in the success of our Concord family. Even when she does sub, teachers always know that she will cover their learning material well with the students. So in short, well, maybe not so short, Amy is flexible and professional. So I kind of close this with a little sadness with a happy twist. Amy is no longer a Building Assistant working at Concord anymore with Lindbergh. So she -- it's safe to say that Concord is definitely losing, and we've lost an amazing Building Assistant. However, we are very happy to share that Amy is continuing her role at Concord as a paraprofessional with the special school district. So we're extremely fortunate that she gets to carry on her love and her passion with our Concord family. So congratulations to Amy Proctor.
All right, so now we'll move on to our student recognition. So one of the things I shared with the families is that we do have 550 kids, right? So this is a pretty big deal, right? And I want these two young ladies to know that it's okay to be recognized and it's okay to feel good about it, right? Because the hard work that you guys put in day in and day out to be good people and good academic students is noticed. That's good. So I have Safi Tokachichu coming up, young lady. You're Mrs. Turks in the audience, so that's nice, too, right? So Safi is a stellar student. She embodies Concord core values with remarkable dedication. Her commitment to accountability is evident in her academic achievements, consistently exceeding expectations. Safi's genuine empathy extends well beyond the classroom, offering support and understanding to her peers in various situations. Inclusivity is a priority for her, creating a welcoming environment where everyone feels valued. Through her kindness, Safi not only sets a positive example, but also inspires a sense of unity and belonging at the Concord community.
And our next student we'd like to honor is Sage Cooper. Come on down. Sage is a fifth grader in Mrs. Holtman's classroom, and it's our pleasure to honor Sage for embodying the five core values at Concord. Sage's kindness and inclusion are just the beginning of what makes her stand out as a leader. She's always willing to help someone in need and is there to support others by being a caring and thoughtful friend. She consistently shows responsibility by working hard and reaching for her goals, no matter how challenging. We are so proud of all she has accomplished already and can't wait to see her continue to shine. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Sage. We have a certificate recognizing you as Student of the Month. There you go. We're going to take a quick picture. We're going to slide over this way a little bit. Congratulations.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Meckel. And now Dr. Tracy Banerak Hughes to present the IDEA Center recognitions.
And what I really love is that the IDEA Center is starting to stand for the whole gifted department. So the two students that we're recognizing today are actually outside of the IDEA Center, but part of our gifted program, and also full of great ideas. But first, we're going to recognize our Teacher of the Year. So if Jennifer Sarek could come up, please. And like Mr. Meckel, I have a script as well, just more because I get nervous, not so much because I'll go on and on forever. But so it's just wonderful to recognize Jennifer tonight. She teaches our middle school gifted students at Sperring as part of the LEAP program. And she's a rock star teacher who creates gifted curriculum that just constantly blows us away with its creativity, its depth of rigor, and just the high interest it has for students. Her units are thematic, they're problem-based. She's really interested in helping students expand their technology. She likes sharing broadcasting and media with her students. She even turned a closet into a green room so that they could have their own little broadcasting studio. Her passion for gifted education is evident in the many years that she's committed to the gifted team. She's always on the lookout for new opportunities, for new technology, for grants, ways to broaden learning experiences for her students. She's received several Lindbergh Foundation grants to help enrich her classroom. Additionally, she is particularly concerned about the social-emotional well-being of her students and making sure that she has opportunities for the students to reflect in her lessons about how they're growing, how they're helping and supporting each other, and just developing an understanding of who they are. She has a very gentle and friendly nature that helps her bond with her students over the time with them, and she gets to spend three years with her group of students. It's a really great way to connect with her kids. In addition, her general education teachers seek out her wisdom and her advice for how to support gifted students in the general ed classroom, and she's always willing to offer strategies and support. She really has been a true asset to our program. Sadly, we're also saying goodbye because she is retiring this year. So I was super excited to share good things about her because we're going to miss her. So thank you, Jennifer. Oh, don't go away. All right, and we're going to start with our oldest student and work our way down. So we're going to have our high school senior come up, Liam Goddard. And Liam was nominated by his high school gifted resource teacher, Dr. Rogner. And this is what she said about Liam. Liam is an excellent example of how our gifted programming allows unique student needs to be met. Throughout Liam's secondary experience, he has taken paths that may be unconventional, but are the best for him. This year, he set a goal of being able to finish his coursework early so he could work at the study bar. And I'm assuming you were an employee at the study bar, helping others with their work. Is that correct? Sort of, okay. Hey, as long as you're helping others. And Liam has also tutored for me as well, helped with some tutoring. But it's a place that's meaningful to him, and so he worked hard to be able to be part of that. Liam also met his goal and was accepted to attend Washington University in the fall. So congratulations, Liam. All right, and then we have a middle schooler to recognize. So Evy Prizgoda, would you come up, please? And Evy is a middle school student at Sperring. And so they were nominated by Mrs. Sarek. So Evy embodies everything we hope to see in a gifted student. They are self-aware and treat everyone with respect and compassion. Evy strives to be welcoming and inclusive to everyone. They are an effective leader who communicates and consistently elevates the level of critical thinking in every group they are involved in. It's not unusual to find Evy surrounded by friends, all intent on understanding and learning and having fun. They work hard and set high standards. Additionally, Evy's teachers mentioned that -- two pager. They can always rely on them to volunteer to work out a problem or help another student. Evy is an amazing person and truly deserving of this award. Congratulations. Congratulations. Want to go right into thank yous? So we're actually going to call Evy right back up. Evy and some other students have written some thank yous for the board for supporting gifted education. So we'll start with Evy, and then we'll work our way down in this kind of theme of starting older and working down to younger.
I also have a script, so look at us go. LEAP has been an extremely positive part of my life. It allowed me to be myself and get the support that I needed. The program helped me meet students with similar minds to me, and so we could all understand each other, and I created a lot of new friendships and bonds. I hope that LEAP can continue to support people and students for years to come. Thank you.
All right. And then we are going to move to Riley. And Riley is a student at Truman in the Middle School LEAP program. So Riley, if you could come up.
Dear Board of Education, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to have an amazing gifted education program in middle school. It challenges me in a meaningful way, and I loved that class. I've gained a lot of knowledge this year in LEAP about the human body and all of its functions. I've loved learning about it in a creative way, and I don't think I would have taken away as much information if I was just reading books about it. Mrs. Mossman is also a wonderful teacher and really understands the way I think about projects and assignments. I think it's awesome that her job is to help us with things in unique ways. I love being in LEAP, and it wouldn't have been possible to be in this class without you giving us that opportunity. Thank you for your continued support of this program.
All right, and then we are going to invite up Joshua, who is a student at the IDEA Center.
I'm in my fourth year of PEGS, and transitioning to the IDEA Center has made a positive impact on my life. Being at the IDEA Center allows individuals to have a very personalized experience, including lots of freedom with seating, various options for projects, and a varied curriculum. Thank you for supporting the creation of the IDEA Center because it means a lot to the gifted kids, and it gives us an opportunity to enjoy specialized learning efficiently. Gifted education also ensures that gifted individuals will be challenged appropriately during designated learning times. I hope you continue to support the IDEA Center and gifted learning as a whole so gifted kids will continue to have an incredible learning experience.
And just want to give a shout out to Joshua's siblings, Chloe and Andrew. They also wrote thank you letters, and we're going to pass those along to the board.
Are there any Concord or IDEA Center student representatives here tonight from the board advisory? Okay, if not, then we will take a short break so that people who came for the recognition part of our meeting can feel free to leave unless they want to stay for the business portion of the meeting. So now is your time. Okay, we will move to 5.0 consent resolutions. We have one this evening. 5.01 Lindbergh Leaders Resolution. Do I have a motion to approve the Lindbergh Leaders Resolution as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Andrew.
Second.
Second by Megan. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven to zero. 6.0 Citizen Communication Regarding Agenda Items. There are none this evening. 7.0 Communications. We will begin with 7.01 Calendar of Events. Ms. Vetter.
Thank you. We have no school this Friday, March 15th, and then spring break is March 18th through the 22nd, so that is next week. So no school for preschool through 12th grade. The Teaching and Learning Board Advisory will meet on March 26th. Then a no school again April 1st for staff professional learning. April 2nd is Election Day. Lindbergh Foundation Scholarship Night is April 3rd. The Student Life Advisory will meet in April on the 4th. April 8th will be Equity Night at the high school from 6:00 to 8:00 in the auditorium. We have a special board meeting and workshop on April 9th. Both are open to the public. Lindbergh Leaders Banquet is April 12th. Finance Advisory meets April 16th. And then we'll be here for our regular board meeting on April 18th, which is also open to the public.
Thank you. 7.02 Report of Meetings. Does anyone have any state parent group or other meetings to share out about?
I can go. The last week was -- was it the last week? Yes, was SSD Governing Council, which I attended. It was mostly looking at bringing on two new board members for SSD. The governing council elects them, which is different than, say, our elections where the public elects. So there are two new board members for SSD. We have Joe Satorius and Joanne Suda. Both bring a lot of experience as board members in other areas, and so I think especially with the new leadership that SSD has, it seems like they're going to start building a lot of strength in that. There was also a lot of conversation around SSD's budget. They are looking at, right now, sitting on like a 71% fund balance, but they were saying in the next two years, it's going to drop to like 30. And so there was just a lot of questions about where is that money going, what's happening. Administration at the time of the meeting was not able to answer a lot of those questions, so it's definitely something that the governing council is looking for more information. And as I get it, I will come back and report.
I was able to attend last night. I saw several of you last night at the Board Candidate Forum. It was nice to hear from all the four candidates for Board of Education, and that's posted now on the Lindbergh website, the video, right, Beth?
Yes, it's on our YouTube channel.
Okay, so anybody who hasn't heard it, please feel free.
Kristi and I attended, it's like a monthly PLC for board members in the county, and I think in the city, too. And there's, I think, a superintendent or two who are on it. And the goal of this meeting is just to talk about legislation that is affecting schools. And the particular bill of concern this time was Bill 727, which is about expanding credits in charter school from $50 million up to $75 million, I guess repealing requirements that they have to fund transportation 40%. It's generally opposed by everybody in public schools, and last night, they had a filibuster on it. So it is on the informal calendar for perfection, and that means it could come up any moment now. So if you would like to voice your concern to your state senator today and tonight, tomorrow's the time to do it.
Thank you. One meeting I wanted to talk about was the Embedded Credits Task Force meeting. You know, they've been meeting all year, and we're just now getting to the point where we're going to sit down and make recommendations for where we're going to move forward. And I know at our last workshop, there was a lot of questions kind of revolving around that work, so I just wanted to give a little update. Anyone else?
Just want to mention the big event we had, the open house. And how wonderful it was. Beth, were we able to kind of ballpark an attendance? It felt like a lot.
So Scott and Barbie Gallo told me the count of the parking spots, and my best count is that the front parking lots were full all day, and they have about 865 parking spots. So I'm going to ballpark 3,000. Wow. Yeah. But that's a guess. But it was steady all day.
They made 20 -- they started out, Food Services had their little food samples for people in the coffee shop, and they started out, made 500. That was gone by 10:30. They ended up making 2,100 little food samples. Not everybody took one, but some people took multiple, I saw. And so Andy, I think I saw you up there many times. So anyway, so we're guessing a little over 3,000 people probably came through there. It was awesome. It was a great day.
I did walk through on the official guided, student-guided tours, and I didn't hear anything but positive comments from people. Everybody was really amazed at the building. It was a really nice day.
Agree. Agree. Thank you.
All right, 7.03 Announcements. It'll be Dr. Lake tonight.
Awesome. If you're not aware, this is School Board Recognition Month is March. So being a board member, as you know, sitting here at the dais sometimes can be a thankless job, but it can also be very rewarding as well. And so for you out there don't know, these are volunteer positions. They don't get paid. In some states, they actually get paid to be -- I know, look at these faces. They're like, what? So anyway, so just from us in the community, just thank you for your service and all you do for kids. And you always put the kids right at the center of everything that we do, and it's a pleasure to work with all of you up here and continue to do great things for our students and staff and all of our employees and our community as a whole. So thank you, guys. And so with that, I think I'm directed to Beth's nodding her head. I got to go take a picture. So we're going to get up and go around here and take a quick picture.
7.05 Board of Education Member Appointments. There are none this evening.
Oh, wait, we got to do that.
Oh, I'm sorry. 7.04 Review of Upcoming Board of Education Meetings Agendas.
I see how you tried to skip over it like that. So the Board of Education will hold a special board meeting and workshop on April 9th. The special board of education meeting's tentative agenda items are to receive election returns and declare results, oath of newly elected members, and reorganization of the board. Then the April 9th workshop agenda is scheduled to include the learning report, which is always a good one. On April 18th, the board will hold another workshop with compass goals and budget goals scheduled to be on the agenda, and the regular meeting agenda is scheduled to include our regular business items, program evaluations on multilingual learning, professional learning plans, and wellness program. And then Truman Middle School and Lindbergh High School are scheduled
Programming begins at the Mill Bottom in Jefferson City at 9:30 a.m. and concludes at the Missouri State Capitol, where you can visit your legislator, attend the rest of the program, and check out the student showcase. As always, we urge you to stay in contact with your legislator, not only during Advocacy Day, but during the entire legislative session. Caitlin says it's important to communicate to them the impact legislation will have on your school district.
School board members are really that local voice for public education, so while we are so happy to welcome our school board members to Jefferson City for Advocacy Day, really every day is Advocacy Day for school board members. You are in your community, you're meeting with not only legislators but local leaders, local, local thought leaders, and you are the voice for the value of public education and what need public education fills in your community. And here at MSBA, we want to make sure that we're giving you the tools and the information that you need to be a strong voice for public education.
As the legislative session progresses, we will keep you updated on developments through our Legislative Voice Newsletter, sent to members via email each Friday during the session, through critical issue alerts and periodic webinars. The state of Missouri's Department of Public Safety is offering another school safety improvement program for fiscal year '24, expiring June 1st of this year. The fiscal year '24 program funding provides public school districts that did not participate in last year's funding program with one-year-at-no-cost access to MSBA's online emergency operations plan development tool, MoEOP. Any Missouri public school district not yet using the MoEOP tool should take advantage of this limited-time offer. John McDonald, the Chief Operating Officer of MSBA's Center for Education Safety, says that it's more important than ever to have a good emergency operations plan.
I responded to and managed school threats and emergencies for the past 16 years, and what I know to be true is that the school threats of today are more complicated than ever before. And the very best school safety, prevention, preparedness, response, and recovery begins with a robust emergency operation plan. At CES, we believe strongly, like all of you, in the duty to protect our students and staff, and it was with this in mind that we created the web-based Missouri Emergency Operation Plan Tool, also known as MoEOP, that 247 districts across the state have been using for the past year. The MoEOP tool, with your input, will provide you with a safe and secure, web-based, all-hazard school emergency operation plan.
Visit the MSBA website for more information on how to register for your district's free MoEOP tool. And last, but certainly not least, it's March, which means it's School Board Recognition Month. All of us at MSBA sincerely want to thank each and every one of you for all that you do. Your hard work and dedication to your schools and communities are appreciated, and your commitment to all students does not go unnoticed. Visit the MSBA website for materials to help celebrate. So with that, thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in April for the next MSBA Board Report.
Thank you, Colin. We will move to Special Reports, and start with our Cabinet Updates. Dr. McKinnney.
Thank you. The Human Resources Board Advisory met this month. We talked about policies that are presented tonight for adoption. There was a pretty deep discussion about those, and they're important, and so those are presented for the board's consideration this evening. We also reviewed the Personnel Report for the month.
Thank you. And Joelle?
Both of my meetings were held this month. We, Facilities Advisory met, we spent, they hadn't seen the board workshop and the reconciliation of the construction projects for the last six years and how that money was spent, so we went over that with that group, and then that was a good segue to Prop 2024 for April, and diving into those items, Dr. Lake's presentation that he has done at several schools and across the community. Scott Barbigallo updated the Facilities Advisory team on his HVAC audit, which is a compass goal, and he has made some major improvements across the board in our HVAC systems. I have to say, our hot-cold reports are the least ever, and at least in my tenure, so he's done a really good job on that, and you'll hear more about that at the board workshop and compass goals. The Finance Group met, and we went over the financials for this board meeting. We also talked about the RFQ for architects, and then we did spend time on diving into our debt and how we project for bond issues and finances. So that's a hot topic right now with people doing their due diligence, which I appreciate that, and asking questions about how we fund these initiatives.
Thank you. And Dr. Sparks?
So Teaching and Learning did not meet this last month. We meet again on March 26th, right after spring break. Technology Board Advisory met, and we reviewed the technology device survey data. We had over 2,400 respondents, mostly our students, which was great to get all of that feedback from our 4th grade students and older. And then we had about 127 teachers who also responded and gave us a lot of really good feedback about the impact that technology is having on the four Cs, as well as what's our balance in terms of using technology and being offline. We've got a little bit of work to do on that, trying to make sure that offline quality experiences are high-level, and we are valuing the time offline as well as online. So great, great conversations there about professional learning and how to continue to support professional learning. That's been an ongoing conversation about how to support technology, professional learning. And then Student Life Board Advisory, this entire year, we have really focused on transitions, how to support transitions from pre-k to kindergarten, from elementary to middle, middle to high school, and then high school to post-secondary. So we finalized those recommendations, and we are using those with conversations with our building-level administrators now.
Thank you. Our student report, Laura, is absent this evening, so her report is available on Word Docs for you to read. We'll move to 9.0 Action Items by Consent. We have action items by consent, 9.01 to 9.12. And the board would like to note, we do have a public gift to schools this evening, and would like to thank Dressel PTO for their generous donation. Does anyone wish to remove any of these items for individual consideration? Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve consent items 9.01 to 9.12?
So moved.
Motion by Matt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kristi. Does anyone have any questions or comments or discussion?
I do have a question on 9.04. There were some change orders in there that, some of them are very old, and so I was wondering as we go into our new Prop R, what we've learned from that, that maybe we could do to improve not having so many old change orders coming up at the last minute.
Yep. If you look at the date on the change orders from BSI, they were dated January, so our architect got half of the change orders in in February and then submitted the rest this month. Looking at them individually, some of the items, when you, when you build something and then you move in, and then you realize you're missing something, some of the larger items on there were for card readers or safety, you know, adding card readers throughout, and also some doors, some safe room doors. Looking at the change order detail, the safe room doors have a long lead time. So at the time that the item is quoted, and then the time that it's installed can be lengthy. So that one that was really old really had to do with those safe room doors. I agree, we're ending the project, and I will say there will be change orders next month one more time. As we've finished the parking lot and are working on punch lists over the spring break, we're going to hopefully finalize the last list of change orders next month. But far as process, we need to work with our architect to stay on top of things moving forward, and they need to stay on top of their subs to get the invoices to the district ASAP. So that's a goal for the next project.
It will be a different architect on these projects, so.
Dr. Sparks, I did have a question. On one of the contracts, I just wanted a little clarification on what TurnItIn is.
TurnItIn is a software that our students submit their writing through, and it does a plagiarism check. It's also been increasingly developing to check for AI as well. So, but it's been a tool we've used for a number of years that has supported student authentic writing.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then I was also wondering, wait, oh, this is a different one. Never mind, sorry, it's the next agenda item. Thanks. Okay, any other questions? All right, then we'll move to a vote. We had a motion by Matt and a second by Kristi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I will abstain.
All right. Thank you. Motion passes six to zero. We'll move to 10.0 Individual Action Items. There are two. 10.01 Approval of the 2024 to 2029 Strategic Plan. To open discussion, do I have a motion to approve the 2024 to 2029 Strategic Plan as presented on February 13th, 2024?
So moved.
Motion by Megan. Sorry, you guys were a little quiet. Second by Andrew. Are Beth or is Dr. White presenting? Or do you have? No, well, as you mentioned, we presented the strategic plan draft to you last month. Dr. White is here from EGL, and I would like to thank him for his leadership and facilitating the process. Was very thorough. We had a lot of community engagement, as you heard last month, and really, this is a strong continuation of our goals from the previous five years. We did put the plan out for feedback after last month's board meeting, and we had about 100 of our community members respond, and so read through those comments, we were able to evaluate the feedback on that, lots of positive comments regarding the survey. We did make one small change to the draft, which was to reword one of our strategic priority statements that was very specific in nature and actually read more like an annual compass goal, because as you'll remember, the goal of our strategic plan is to be our overarching guiding vision, and our annual compass goals are where we get into those specific tactical steps. And so we did make a slight revision to one of those priority statements that will go into the compass goals, but we are proud to present the new five-year strategic plan to you for approval. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I just am really impressed with the work that's been put into this over these last however many months, and I think that it is just a great piece that really puts Limburg in a foundation of what it's doing and what it's doing really well for kids. And it's just exciting to think about where this will take Limburg in the next five years, and I'm just proud of the work that's been happening.
Thank you. We had a good group, I felt like, on the committee. I mean, attendance was high, and everyone was very engaged. It was. Yes, our steering committee, committee met three times. We had a little bit over 30 members, and most were very regular with their attendance, but it really spanned across parents, teachers, community members, elected officials, so we had a really good group and very engaged throughout the process. All right, any other questions? All right, well, we had a motion by Megan and a second by Andrew, and we can now vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. 11.02 Master Lease Agreement, Apple Inc. To open discussion, do I have a motion to approve the master lease purchase agreement with Apple Inc. for a total of $1,291,347.35, with a first payment due in the amount of $322,836.84 on 7/10/2024, which includes the resolution authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of a master lease purchase agreement and approving the execution and delivery of Schedule Number 6 to the master lease purchase agreement? Is there a motion? Julia, I mean, and a second by Matt?
Yep.
Okay. I think two months ago I read a much longer one. So, Joelle, do you have anything to add? Or are there, is it Joelle or Tara?
Of us really, you know? Yep. It's, this is the second lease. This is replacing the middle school leases that we did early on, and it's combining the teacher lease and the student lease in one, so that's great. We, I know Dominic was very pleased that we got some updated, the most updated equipment. You know, there was, when he ordered it, it wasn't the most, I mean, it wasn't, and then they made a turn, a positive turn this time, and we got the most updated equipment. He's doing a little bit something different with PD, which we've kind of explained, and pulling that out, and he's going to save some money over the long term in that area, so we're ready to move on and get those in for the kids for the next school year.
And that was going to be my question, was about that we're not using the Apple Professional Learning, and I was just curious what the process was behind that.
So we've been evaluating Apple Professional Learning for a number of years, and it's been a question of how much money do we spend paying for really what are high-cost trainers to come in from Apple to work with our teachers and to build the capacity of using Apple devices? And we've been watching it for a number of years. We are at a point where we are spending a significant amount of money on what is the equivalent of 24 days of professional learning, or is the, what was proposed going into next year, 36 days of professional learning? And we've really hit that tipping point where we've determined that if we continue to spend the money on Apple Professional Learning, it was going to cost us more in the long run for fewer days of professional learning experiences than if we were to hire our own person internally. So we are no longer going to invest in the Apple Professional Learning. We still have some remaining days that are carrying over from previous leases, but we're instead going to hire an instructional technology specialist who can really hone in, not just on Apple, but remember, at the second, at the high school level, we have Chromebooks. There's a lot more we can be doing to support WeVideo and some of those other elements. So we will, we will, over the course of the next few years, realize a savings by making that switch from Apple Professional Learning to our own person in-house.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay. We had a motion by Julia and a second by Matt, and we'll move to our vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. 11.01 For the Record. We have one For the Record report this evening. It's the Guidance and Counseling Program Evaluation. So please review this report and contact Dr. Sparks with any questions, unless you have any now. I have one. Sorry. So I did notice that those ratios of counselor to student and social worker to student is really creeping up, especially at the secondary level, and then I saw that one of kind of the goals of the program is to increase staff, so I was just curious what, what's our process going forward, how we were going to address that.
I think one of the things to remember is that up until two years ago, DESI had a ratio of 1 to 500 as the expectation for counselors, and when MSIP-6 went into play, they dropped that in half to 1 to 250. So we have been really intentional over the last couple of years about meeting the expectations of that significant change in staffing expectations for DESI, so we continue to monitor and to watch. When you look at the data, one of the things that's noteworthy, and it's never been very clearly articulated from DESI, at the high school level, it looks like we have a 1 to 382 ratio of counselors to students, but that does not take into account the one and a half college and career counselors that are also working with our students doing individual services. So again, something we're continuing to watch. I would also remind you that we did add a social worker last year as a result of a grant, so just continuing to find those opportunities where we can leverage the resources that we have in our community, whether that's Children's Service Fund or other state grants to be able to continue to support our students' social emotional needs.
And we did add a counselor, was it last year was when we added the counselor?
Yes.
And so was that kind of in response to the new MSIP-6?
Yes, there've been, there've been a number, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but there've been a number of FTEs added in the last couple of years to support that.
And then I saw that one of kind of the goals of the program is to increase staff. So I was just curious, what are, what's our process going forward, how we were going to address that?
I think one of the things to remember is that up until two years ago, DESI had a ratio of 1 to 500 as the expectation for counselors, and when MSIP-6 went into play, they dropped that in half to 1 to 250. So we have been really intentional over the last couple of years about meeting the expectations of that significant change in staffing expectations for DESI. So we continue to monitor and to watch. Um, when you look at the data, one of the things that's noteworthy, and it's never been very clearly articulated from DESI, um, at the high school level, it looks like we have a 1 to 382, um, ratio of counselors to students, but that does not take into account the one and a half college and career counselors that are also working with our students doing individual services. So, um, again, something we're continuing to watch. I would also remind you that we did add a social worker last year as a result of a grant. So, um, just continuing to find those opportunities where we can, um, leverage the resources that we have in our community, whether that's Children's Service Fund or other state grants to be able to continue to support our students' social, emotional needs.
And we did add a counselor, was it last year? Was it when we added the counselor?
Yes.
And so was that kind of in response to the new MSIP-6?
Yes. There've been, there have been a number, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but there have been a number of FTEs added in the last couple of years to support that 250 range, or to get as close to it as we, as we are comfortable with.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think there's some compelling data in here to support the need for the counselors too. There's a chart in here about suicide risk, and it's, uh, I don't know where these numbers, where are these numbers coming from? Because it's 72 kids at risk at elementary, and that just astounded me.
And anytime a student makes any statement at all, it is taken very seriously, and there's an entire process that goes into play. So what you'll notice, it's probably been the last five years that we've had a very rigorous pop process. So it's the first time we've been able to track data over time and see what the impact of those statements are. Um, a lot of times, it is, you know, I was, I was messing around, or I just said that, or I was upset, but you cannot take that at face value. So every time a student makes a statement that indicates they might be, um, at risk for self-harm, it is fully investigated. And those, depending on the seriousness of the situation, can take a counselor the entire day.
So that number is not 72 different children, it's 72 times a child said something?
Correct.
Okay. And it does go down by high school, that's encouraging.
Early intervention.
Thanks. Anyone else? Okay, there are no other reports this evening. 11.03, Review of Board Policies and/or Administrative Procedures. Administrative Procedures, GBRBB-2-AP1, GBBEB-AP2, JFCI-2-AP1, JHCD-AP2, KG-AP1, and KK-AP1 have been reviewed and/or updated by the administration and are presented to the board for information only. There are no 11.04 items this evening, and as we already conducted our executive session, there is no need, so we can move to 14.0, Adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn Board Meeting 1592?
So moved.
Motion by Mike?
Second.
Second by Megan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes six to one. Board Meeting 1592 is adjourned.